Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. This is the December 21st, 2020 Regular School Board Meeting at 6:00 PM, and I will call this meeting to order. I will take roll call, beginning with Janie Fair.
Present.
Ms. Jones?
Present.
Holly Tower, I believe, is not joining us this evening. Have you heard anything more, Carsten?
I have not. She let us know a couple of weeks ago that she would not be able to attend.
Right. Mr. Bryant?
Present.
Mr. Christensen?
I'm here.
Mr. Derrick's?
Here.
And Cher is here. So we have six out of seven school board members. If you would join me, we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America.
And to the Republic of the United States. One nation, our God, invisible, with liberty and peace on its shores. Lisa, I'm so sorry. That takes so long to get going, so thank you. I have asked Janie Fair to share our vision statement this evening.
Thank you, Chair Rowe. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens.
Thank you. The agenda is listed in our board packet. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chair?
Yes, oh, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I would respectfully ask that we move anything to do related to start the discussion of transition back into school to be at the beginning of our agenda this evening. That's the main topic where we really, people are asking about it. Let's get it to the forefront, get a deal with it right away. I know it's 4.2.
Yeah.
And you want any other parts of it for sure to go back that far? Any other parts, I'm open to that.
It is at the beginning of the business session, right?
4.2 is after consent agenda, all the other reports and that. I asked that we brought it up to right after public comment, 4.2. 2.3, excuse me.
Sure, 2.3?
After 2.3.
Do we need a motion for that change?
Actually, if I could add one more change, Pam.
Sure.
Delete item 4.6 grievance because we came to a tentative resolution.
Okay, so we're gonna move the discussion about transition back to school to 3... I'm sorry, where did you want that? After 2.3, right? So...
Yes, ma'am, sure.
After 2.3, and we want to delete 4.6.
Well, I'm concerned that we're skipping over 4.1 COVID update prior to going into the discussion about what transition looks like. I think we're going to lose valuable information if we don't have that discussion, that kind of filling in first.
As I stated, I was hoping to moving anything else, so if that's what you want to do, I'm open to that discussion. That would be a good reason as well.
So we'd like COVID update and then the transition moved both of those items. Ireland, go ahead.
I'm just not sure about this. It seems to me you need a consensus of the board to, or a motion, consensus of the board to change the order. I haven't heard, I don't know if you need a motion for it or not. I guess I'm a little confused, I'm not real in favor of it.
Before you set the agenda, you can amend it and then make a motion to approve the amended agenda, which I am doing so now.
So maybe a motion to amend the agenda to put it out in certain places in order, and a second to see if we're gonna do it. Does that sound right?
That sounds what I'm hearing. Janie, go ahead.
I'll just second the motion to make the change.
All right, so Jim's made the motion to amend the agenda, moving the COVID update and the transition back to school to follow the public comment of 2.3, and we're gonna delete 4.6, which is the grievance.
Could you repeat that, Pam? I temporarily dropped out of the meeting.
I'm sorry?
Could you repeat that? I temporarily dropped out of the meeting.
Yes, you are on my screen twice. So the motion is to move the COVID update and the transition back to school to follow public comment after 2.3, and we would like to delete 4.6, which is the grievance.
And who made the motion?
The motion is made by Jim and seconded by Janie.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote on the amended agenda, starting with Ms. Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
And Cher votes aye, so that passes 6-0. All right, thank you for that. I will just call your attention to the educational plan, which is always a part of our school board agenda packet. And then the next thing on our agenda is recognitions and upcoming events. Does anybody have anything that they would like to share?
I'm gonna hurry up and write my name in here too, Pam, but...
Oh, go ahead.
You know, I just wanted to give a special highlight to our Red Wing High School Music Department. I got to send an email to Carsten too, but I'm sure many of you remember a year ago, we had that awesome holiday extravaganza, which like blew everybody away, and people still talk about. But I have been really impressed listening in on some of my kids' band lessons, and I know other parents have said that, just they're doing a great job of how they're engaging students, doing one-on-one time over the video, even just having time where they're listening to, you know, classical music and commenting on it together. So just great job, Red Wing High School Music Department, because I've just been very impressed, and I know they're engaging the kids really well. So thank you so much for doing a great job.
Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a shout out to the parents and students in the district that have taken time to share with us their concerns and comments and issues in regards to the distance learning, the hybrid, kids not in school, in school. Understand that we got besieged by very many emails and phone calls and people stopping you. It's hard to reply to all of them. A number of them took what I always call the high road. A few may not have, but that's beside the point. The point is, they reached out for democracy to your elected people who represent them on the school board, and I appreciate their comments, concerns, and issues as we go forward at this meeting and into 2021 with how the school should be shaped. Thank you.
Well, I'll just point out a couple of things. One is, we are now on winter break. School will resume on January 4th. And I do know that we have about 400 families that have signed up to pick up meals this Wednesday. Do you know, is that something that families can still do? Sign up for, to pick up food on Wednesday?
You know, I'm not sure the exact deadline, so I'd encourage all parents to go to the website that's listed and go ahead and enter the request as soon as possible.
I know that the folks in the food service area have been working very diligently in preparing all of those meals, and we thank them for that too, because it's a lot. And, boy, they're fantastic meals. So I would encourage all families, if that's something that you would like to take advantage of, that it's open to everybody, every student 18 and under in our district. So definitely check that out. Any other recognitions before I move us to say a few words about our outgoing school board members? Any other recognitions we'd like to highlight? All right, well, I will take this opportunity then to say a ginormous and hearty thank you and farewell to our three outgoing school board members. It's been my absolute pleasure and honor to have been working with the three of you, and I've learned immensely from the three of you, and I appreciate that so much, and I will miss all of you. Heidi Jones, who has been here with us for 12 years, Mr. Christensen, who has been here also for 12 years, and Ms. Janie Fair, who has just finished her eighth year with us. So I would just like to thank you. Superintendent Anderson, I'll turn that over to you for a moment. We are recognizing our outgoing school board members.
Yeah, thank you, Pam. You know, obviously, after being on all these meetings and get-togethers for years, it's, you know, a sad moment for me. So first, I'd like to thank Janie Fair for her dedication to the school district. She's been on the school board for eight years. And I knew, I met Janie relatively early in my time here in Red Wing, and, you know, she's such a spark and such a fun person to be around. She also has passion for a lot of different issues, and most importantly, for our kids. So I've always enjoyed being with Janie. You know, wherever we are, if it's at board meetings or conferences or out in the city when I would, you know, when I see people from time to time. So thank you, Janie, for your eight years. Also, Mike and Janie have been on the board for 12 years. And Mike, well, and actually, this is true for all of them. All three will always ask questions. They challenge me and the board to think and do better, because they all care about our kids and want that system possible. You know, Mike was always, I always considered him a kind of an accountaclass. He's an innovator, you know, he always challenges what we're thinking and doing, and that's always good for somebody like myself and for kind of a well-established system. So I remember the, he gave one article that talked about, you know, building the grid, you know, making sure that we have a grid in place, and then we can do great things. And I think he and so many others have kind of led that effort. And of course, Heidi Jones has been on the board for 12 years as well. I think most of us know her as being a strong advocate for like the policies, procedures, you know, process, you know, she's really process-minded. But, you know, she also greatly cares about kids. So again, thank you to all three of you for yours of service to the district.
Carsten, would you mind holding that certificate up one more time? As a token of our appreciation, we will be sending you all a certificate honoring your service to the school district, and so you will be receiving that in the next couple of days. But thank you so much for your service, and I'll give each of you an opportunity to say a few words if you would like, starting with Heidi Jones. Who is currently frozen on my screen.
Oh, no.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, having technical difficulties, way to go. I'll keep it short, because we have a lot of work to do, and I'm still focused on that. I love the work. I wish I was still doing it. I tried to help all students and represent that, and I've created great loving trust, great trusting relationships with a lot of staff people. And so I honor the work you've brought to the table over many years and try to improve our good governance in the district and so I, and our decision-making. And despite the tough challenges ahead, I wish the new board all the best. You've got some new energy and some new folks, and I hope you'll build on those relationships and do great work going forward. So thank you, everyone.
Thanks again, Heidi, and congratulations on your retirement from the board. Mike Christensen, would you like to say anything today?
I will just say that it's been a real pleasure serving with Heidi on the board, and relating back to that article that I gave to Carsten. She has been the grid, and that's allowed me to fly. So she's really, she's totally grounded, and that frees up a lot of energy to go different places, and it's absolutely vital. And this school district is in a much better place than it was 12 years ago. So thanks, and it's been a pleasure serving, and it's not an unrewarding experience at all as opposed to what some people might want to tell you. It's been a great experience. Thank you.
You will be missed. And Ms. Fair, would you like to share any words?
Sure, of course I would. But first, I just, it's been an honor to work with the rest of my board members, all of you and staff, because it really is about being a team, and we all bring different things to the table, and I think that's important. So I just wanted to take time to just say that I always felt like I tried to represent the community. I love the aspect of listening to people and going out there to get feedback. I think I'm most proud of kind of the career exploration stuff we've been able to do, and hopefully will continue to do. And then I just want to thank my parents for always watching my kids, usually on Monday night. They might be watching, so thank you. And then Dave of my four kids, because it was awesome, you know. Sorry, it's hard for people that have young kids to do this. So it was really cool that I had people that could take care of my kids, so I could put time into this. But thank you to everybody. Everybody knows I put my emotions on my sleeve, so thanks for a good time.
Oh, all three of you are gonna be missed, so thank you again for your service, and we appreciate it. Ireland?
Yeah. What a pleasure it's been to serve with you. We're losing 32 years of experience after tonight. We're left with 14 left, and then a new board. And I know we'll move forward. I'm grateful for what you guys have done, and there is no doubt that each and every one of you have a huge amount of passion for our district and have given your all for us, and I thank you for it.
Madam Chair, I'll just, been on here, been on boards a lot of years, been served with a lot of different people, so I know getting off a board certainly is always something that is unusual, if you've been on a board for quite a while. So I'll just say this, enjoy your Monday nights off starting in 2021.
Yes, I'm gonna call all of you on January 4th, just to see if you're, what you're doing at 5:45. Thank you again. Thank you for your service. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. I have two people who've submitted public comment to me. Carsten, have you had any?
Tim Bowes requested public comment, but besides Tim, I haven't received any requests.
Okay, yeah, I have one other. So Mr. Bowes, are you ready to, to, would you like to share first, please?
Geez, I didn't know I was gonna get to go first.
Yes. Lucky you.
Lucky me. I set my timer, so out of due respect, so, and I even wrote my notes. So I'll try and keep it at, to that three-minute limit and not try to be too loquacious. Okay, Mike? Okay, all right. Kudos and congrats to the incoming new school board members, Anna Ostendorf and Mrs. Buck, and Mrs. Tift. I don't know if they know what they're in for. I tried to forewarn Anna, and she's in there anyway, and all of them. Good luck to them all. They have more work coming up for them than they probably could ever imagine. I hope that they remain informed with as many regional sources as possible, and I hope they, as Mike intimated, I hope they know that there is gratitude for what it is you do on the, on a school board, and for all the work that you do, et cetera. It is just not adequately reflected by your stipend. I'll move on. Kudos and grats to a returning chair. Ms. Rowe, you know what you're in for, and you came back. Thank you. Step three here, sincerest thanks and appreciation. Janie Fair, it's a pleasure to sit across the table from you for several years, ma'am, and I know that you always had the best interest of the district and your kids and all kids at heart, and it's a great pleasure to get to know you personally and to share the camaraderie and social rapport as well as a professional. And the same goes for Mr. Christensen. Mike, I always enjoyed our conversations about what was going on in the schools, and I know you had your best interest at heart. I love the fact that you like to think outside the box as well. I think I can relate. People that know me, I think, would suggest that same thing goes. So thank you to both of you for your years of service and your dedication. And Mrs. Heidi Jones, I have absolutely the most respect in the world for the effort that you brought to the table all 12 years. No disrespect to anybody else, but for anybody who doesn't know, Ms. Heidi Jones is the ultimate when it comes to school board knowledge, what has gone on in this district for the past 12 to 20 years. She's not limited to just the years she had experience, and she probably knows more about what's coming down the pike in the next two to five to 10 years than anybody else. And she was a joy to know personally and professionally as well. I had the pleasure of having her kids in school as well over the years. That was a while ago, so I remember them fondly too. And just absolute sheer respect out to her and to all three of you and to all of you. I would tell the three incoming board members, please, for your benefit and for the district's benefit, if she'll allow it, please put Heidi Jones' cellphone number in your speed dial immediately. And a final comment from me regarding the big discussion and decision going on in this school district and every school district across Minnesota and the country right now about how to get back to some form of normalcy. All I would request is, is please follow the governor's guidelines to a T as much as possible. I think he has been setting the tone and doing a fantastic job for the state of Minnesota and the region, and I think that from there, you should know that I will trust our building and district leadership to make the right decision. And so that's really all I have to say on that. And beyond that, Godspeed and good luck to everybody.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bowes. We appreciate that so much. Thank you. Julie Brayford is up next.
Hi, everybody. Just want to take a few minutes here to share my thoughts about getting our kids back to school. I shared my comment with Pam, she's already read it, but just want to say I'm the parent of a Red Wing kindergarten student, and I have two Red Wing high school students who are in alternative settings here in town. And I just want to take a moment today to express my thoughts to you about a plan to get Red Wing schools back to an in-person learning model. I feel so strongly that it's important for our kids to be in school as soon as possible. I feel like with some of the numbers that we saw on Good Hugh County's website, that Red Wing still has the lowest number per capita of COVID-19 cases. And I'm definitely not suggesting that COVID isn't serious, because it is. But I feel like with proper social distancing, with teaching our kids how to keep their hands washed, coughing into elbows, and I know they work hard on it, because my kindergartner tells me so, that we can not only stop or slow the spread of COVID, but slow the spread of other common illnesses like the flu, like colds. I think students here are experiencing the COVID slide a lot, like a summer slide. They're falling behind in reading, they're falling behind in math, and research is showing that there are substantial math losses in grades five through eight and modest reading losses across grades catering as a result of the COVID-19 disruptions. My source from that was "Illuminate Education." Keeping students out of school is causing our students to fall further behind and delays their ability to catch up when they do return to school. Academics are not my only concern. I'm concerned about the physical health of our children, who may not be getting proper meals or physical movement and exercise. I'm concerned about the mental health effects of students who are at home. I'm the parent of a student who is currently hospitalized because of mental health concerns. School's not the only reason for that, but the isolation and the lack of connection that these kids are feeling contributes to those things. My kindergartner cries every day when she tries to do her schoolwork, and it's really disheartening to see her feel that way. It's not for lack of trying. I know Kim Corey's on this meeting. The teachers and the staff at Jefferson are amazing. They're doing the best they can in this model, but it's hard. It's hard to see my five-year-old cry. I just want to summarize and implore you guys to try to come up with a plan for the safest way to get our kids back into school as soon as we can. I think that their success mentally and socially and health-wise depends on them being in a physical school building. Thank you again, you guys, for listening to me tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie, for your comments. Typically, you know, I would provide a brief response, but because we're gonna be talking about COVID and the transition plan next, we'll kind of wait until then. But I appreciate your succinct and strong views. I really, really much appreciate it.
Absolutely, Julie. Thank you for being here, both you and Tim. We appreciate public comment and very much look forward to that every meeting. So thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Now, we will move on in our agenda with the changes that we made. We will now be moving into the COVID-19 update, which is listed on your agenda as item 4.1.
Well, I will jump in here, and just to give a brief introduction. First of all, everyone should be able to see a Google slideshow on there. Can I see a thumbs up if you can see it? Good deal. I'd like to thank Sherri Johnson, who took information that I had prepared and turned it into a Google slide presentation. So she deserves a credit for the visuals. The second part I'd like to say is, is we have administrators ready to answer questions that may arise, but I really think that we can briefly review this information. I will touch, you know, the high points, but then I'm hoping we can get through this part so we can start talking about the transition plan as soon as possible. I'm not trying to squelch the conversation or the questions, but we will probably need to spend, you know, significant time on the transition plan, so we want to chat about that. First of all, I've had some questions about decision-making in terms of learning models. In, I think, August, the board approved a resolution that would enable me to move into distance learning or a more restrictive environment, but the school board always has the right to make the final decision. That's one of the school board's prerogatives. Before a recommendation is made to the school board in terms of going back to in-person or back into hybrid, we do have multiple layers of feedback and decision-making internally. We have a COVID-19 response team consisting of Shonda Jorgensen, Joni Gorman, and Don Wettern. We review data, they do the contact tracing, they work with the county, you know, on numbers and, you know, what we're supposed to be doing in schools. They've done a great job for us. We also have regular meetings with Good Hugh County Public Health. Jody Skeen now is our primary representative with county. She does a great job, and of course, she works with others at the county to develop and share data and answer other questions. We also have a large group of district leaders. Some are the building leaders, but then we also have department leaders. And so we have regular meetings, sometimes more than once a week, where we talk about possibilities in terms of operations and educational services. Also, earlier today, I called for a meeting with, you know, multiple stakeholders, including union reps and parents and staff members. We had about five people who showed up. Unfortunately, we didn't have any parents that were able to make it today, but we still had a really good discussion about, you know, plans moving forward. And so I'll try to mention some of their perspectives as we go through the transition process, if it's appropriate. These are the different areas that we focus on when we're formulating recommendations to the board. And, you know, the most important one, well, they're all important, but the number of students and staff quarantined or isolated is always the one thing that I look at right away, in particular, the staff, because the number of staff members who are quarantined or isolated, you know, determines whether or not we can satisfactorily provide in-person or hybrid learning. You know, we need staff members or substitutes present in order to make the whole system work. But we look at a variety of data. But we look at a variety of data. We do have several changes that will be implemented because of new guidance from the state in its safe learning plan. So I, you know, I included some information in our written agenda. And so if you have any questions about that, either Joni or I will respond. One thing that I'll point out is that we will have staff testing. Every staff member will be able to be tested every two weeks. And so that's a very positive change. Also, we're expecting to get our staff members vaccinated as soon as those vaccines are available. So those are two critical mitigation efforts that we'll be undertaking this spring, this winter and spring. Had quite a few questions about kind of accountability for teachers. And our building administrators are active as far as responding to questions, responding to concerns, and also proactively looking at ways to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward with teaching and learning. First, we have our teacher evaluation system that we streamlined this year. We are continuing those efforts, working with teachers on, you know, their growth plans, evaluating them and sharing feedback. And so that continues this year during distance learning. Last spring, we were told by the state not to evaluate. This year, we have our regular evaluation schedule. One really positive thing that we've done this year is that the building leaders have asked for access to teacher Google classrooms and GoGuardian so that they can periodically monitor what's happening in different classrooms. And so I know that depending on the grade level or the site, you know, some principals have set up actual schedules. Some kind of pop in and out. Sometimes they'll check to see if our curriculum is being implemented. Other times are just seeing if students are engaged, those kinds of things. And then the third major area is that we do have professional learning communities that are meeting regularly. In fact, I think our process now is probably stronger than it was in any previous year, at least, you know, for the last decade or two. And so I know that, like, our elementary principals have split up different grades. And so then they're responsible for overseeing and participating in different professional learning communities, depending on the grade level. So I feel good about that. We can always do better. I received one concern from a board member, actually, that we followed up on and we've taken, you know, some action there. And again, with the goal of, you know, we want to provide the best education possible in difficult circumstances. Teacher prep time was also brought up as a question. And, you know, we are obligated by the state to provide teachers with an additional 30 minutes of preparation time during the typical student day. That's over and above any other prep time that we give them because of their contract, so we have to do it. It can be kind of frustrating because we have a schedule set up, and then all of a sudden, we need to provide this additional time. But I do think the teachers are using that time to better prepare for their distance lessons or hybrid lessons. And so I think it's a good thing overall. Calville does their teacher prep on Fridays. The elementary schools kind of depend on particular circumstances in the grade or in the school. But the principals have told me that they are providing teachers without opportunity. And then at the high school, Mr. Nemovich added some time to the lunch, adjoining the lunchtime so that they get the additional time on every day. During hybrid, that teacher prep time will likely be occurring on Wednesdays because that's when distance learning occurs. We do not have to provide the additional teacher prep time for kids in K through four if they're in person. You know, the accountability plan for teachers or for students during testing is a common concern across the board, not just in Red Wing, but throughout the state and I'm sure country. As I mentioned earlier, teachers have, the teachers and administrators have the ability to review what's happening on student screens via Google Meet and GoGuardian. Then we also have some options as far as a pass/fail or letter grades, standards-based learning, and then use of some of the assessments or, you know, more interactive assessments. A lot of those things occur by teacher. It's a lot easier for kids to misuse the system if they're just filling out, you know, multi-response checkbox. It's a lot tougher if, you know, kids are asked questions during the class or if they're asked to summarize, you know, what they've learned on particular topics in a better kind of assessment. So that really depends on the teacher. But we're making every effort that is reasonable in terms of tracking what happens with testing. And we're very similar to what other school districts are doing. We have a lot of assessments that we give in a particular year. We did do our FastBridge assessments in the fall. And we are coming up with different plans for doing them in the winter. I won't go over the details. But each grade level is determining how best to do that. I was also asked to look at some attendance rates. And so you can see that in general, the quote-unquote attendance rate went up slightly during distance learning. And I have to put that in quotes because, you know, it's hard to monitor if someone is there for an entire period or if they just sign in and they, you know, have some sort of video that shows a loop of them working or, you know, if they're tuning out. So I'm certainly not saying that participation is better than what other schools are experiencing. Again, this is a common problem. But at least kids are, by and large, checking in on a regular basis like they're supposed to. We've also analyzed some grade rates and failure rates. And this is a, this is an ongoing problem, again, not just in Red Wing, but throughout the state. I've seen some statewide publications talking about the failure rates going up 50% or even 100% in school districts. We are no different at the high school level. We have a relatively high failure rate in a good year. And this year, the actual rate is higher than what it's been in the past. So again, we have a multiple strategies to address that, and I listed some of them in the written documents. And, you know, again, it's a challenge for students and teachers alike when we're especially in hybrid or distance learning to make sure that they're engaged and to get the kids to finish all of their homework on time. And you can see the hard data on the grades and the failure rates in the board packet. Face-to-face interaction is, you know, it's an easy thing to say that we need, but it's harder to make significant changes. The guidance that we've received is not to require kids to turn on their videos for a variety of reasons. And so that can diminish the level of face-to-face interaction that we have. We do have morning meetings in the elementaries so that at least kids can check in and learn their routines for the day. We believe that if people can check in and be seen by a teacher, that they're more likely to do so. And then, of course, we do have the ability to use video cameras. And I think there are two things. First, I think teachers need to continue to encourage kids to turn on their camera. There are some teachers with a high level of face-to-face interaction, and then we have other teachers with a very low rate. And usually, it's just the teacher insisting on, let's turn on the cameras. You know, we're part of the same class. Let's see each other and talk to each other. That's really important. I'm also hoping, and maybe this is a pipe dream, but, you know, I'm hoping that students who crave student-to-student interaction and interaction with their parents just start doing it. You know, if we have some student leaders who kind of take the rein and just encourage their friends to do it, you know, other kids in class, that would probably have just as powerful of an impact as teachers encouraging it. We've been carefully monitoring how many of our kids want to come back from online-only instruction starting second semester. And so I did update the, you know, this section of the board packet to include the latest numbers there. And, well, I won't share the actual totals necessarily, but I will say that in grades K through four, we're averaging about two to four kids per grade. We can handle that. You know, it's a big deal when someone comes back because we have to follow room capacities. And so that determines which school they can be placed, how they're transported, whether or not they get special ed services in that location, you know, those kinds of things. Grades five through 12, we can generally handle because of the class sizes in fifth and sixth grade and then just the registration process. You know, we can determine, you know, which kids are in which classes starting second semester. Here's some basic food service meal information. And I know we've gone over this several times. We've had a very strong food service presence since last March 16th. And we've had good numbers, especially when we had in-person and hybrid learning. You know, kids were grabbing their breakfast and lunch. It's tougher in distance because right now, the families need to go to the school on Wednesdays to pick up those meals. Once they're there, though, they can pick up meals for seven days, breakfast and lunch. So if you have three kids, you could get 42 meals on a Wednesday that you'd use throughout the week. Mental health supports, again, this is not ideal. Mental health therapists want to be in-person when they're working with kids. And so, you know, access to kids, you know, is problematic when people are distanced. We did, we are continuing the relationship with Fernbrook. And so we do have mental health therapists who are working virtually with kids who have put in the request for those services. Their caseloads are large. They're within the appropriate limits, but they are large. We are still looking for one more therapist to work in our system. We authorized it. I know it's been advertised, but we're still looking for one more. If you do have more questions about mental health supports, Sherri will be available to answer those questions in just a couple of minutes. When we're deciding about going into in-person or hybrid learning, first and foremost, we need to make sure that we have our safety measures in place. I'm very confident with our plan in all grades as far as how we've implemented that. We also need to greatly consider the availability of staff and substitutes. Those are the two big things, as well as the county case rate and the city case rate and the number of transmissions in school. But I'm confident if we have enough staff members who are able to work in the building with kids, that everything else will fall into place. And so I know last November, that was actually my bigger concern. You know, county COVID rates were rising, you know, pretty rapidly. But the one thing that really struck home is that we didn't have, we started to not have enough staff members on a daily basis. And so that was a big factor in going to distance learning. And you can see, staff availability isn't just teachers. Teachers and our support personnel, including special ed pairs and general ed pairs, are all critical, as well as our support teachers, custodians, and food service workers. I won't go over this in great detail, but there are some changes as far as face coverings that the state just recently issued, expectations for clear barriers and indoor physical activity, as well as some meal changes. But I feel good about where we are, and we'll be able to make some adjustments to make it work. And then this last slide kind of shows our priorities in terms of bringing back kids. You know, first, the administrative team wants kids back in-person or hybrid as soon as possible. First, we realize that there are some kids who have significant intensive service needs. Those would be kids like our autistic kids, our kids who are learning English from a very beginning level, and, you know, other kids as well who have those significant needs. The administrative team recognizes that we need to bring these kids just to give them a chance. We also want to prioritize our youngest learners in bringing them back in-person. Because of some state guidelines and actually our own thinking, we'd want to bring in K through two first, then grades three through four, and then finally, five through 12, although you'll see an option here pretty soon that would bring back grades three through 12 at the same time. But those are the priorities. And you can see, these are some of the areas that we're still providing services, although they look very different now than they did a year ago. And that's all I have. Hopefully, it just gave you a snapshot of where we are. The actual written documents give a lot more data and more specific information. Also, just a reminder, I do have administrators here who can answer the questions in different areas. We can play tag team if you do have some questions that need to be answered.
Janie has her name in the queue.
Yep. Thank you. Karsten, can you elaborate a little bit more on the staffing? You know, I don't think we really discussed that in depth very much. And I guess I would like to know exactly, like, what are staffing issues? You know, we talked about Red Wing's story. You know, are we different than other school districts? Like, how much of an impact have we had with kind of needing to have accommodations and such?
Yeah, I know that every school district is different, you know, obviously. So, you know, it's really hard to compare schools. You know, we have some neighboring schools that have, you know, different issues, different staffing levels and those kinds of things. But compared to the Big Nine schools, I think we are very similar, you know, because we're a bit larger like the other Big Nine schools. And, you know, I will say that in September and October, we had good coverage with staff members and substitutes. You know, almost every day, you know, the principals would be waking up early to kind of make sure that people were placed in the right spots. But we had enough permanent subs and monthly subs so we could make it happen. Then after Halloween, I don't know if it was because of Halloween or just the timing, but that's when we had the change in the curve. And suddenly, we had more staff members who were absent. And I will say that generally, they're for legitimate concerns. Almost always, they're for legitimate concerns. But clearly, we had more absences, and we had a tougher time to fill those absences. Plus, we had, you know, some substitutes who also had legitimate reasons to be absent from their assignment. And so we had staff member absences that increased, and we also had the substitutes who increased their absences. And so that started in November, and I know one day, we were five short. And, you know, we can cover the high school staff members or high school teachers when they're gone because we can require other high school teachers to sub for them. It's very challenging with grades K through six because of the different rules that we have to follow in terms of social distancing, recess supervision, and those kinds of things. So in a nutshell, that's kind of, you know, in a really broad sense, you know, it definitely changed around Halloween. In turn, you know, I included some numbers here as far as the number of positions we need to fill and how many additional permanent subs we'd like to hire for the rest of the year. And so we're hoping that we can hire, you know, for all of the open positions and hire some additional people, you know, to sub for teachers and paraprofessionals.
One of the things I'd just like to comment on, Carsten, is that you and I and Arlen had this conversation this week that it's really important to get the information out to our community that we have this need for, for short-term substitutes as well as long-term subs. And I think, I think there's a whole lot of professionals in this community. I think we need a four-year degree in order to, to sub. Is that correct?
Yeah, four-year degree to, to get a short call substitute license.
Right. So I think, A, we need to get the information out there on what does it take to actually become a sub, and B, to, to market that need. Because I think there are a whole lot of parents out there that would definitely put themselves out there to be able to help because they want their children to come to school so badly that if that's the barrier, if this is one of the biggest barriers that we have, then we need to figure out how to solve that problem. And I think we have a lot of solutions right here in Red Wing. We're a community that comes together when we need to. And I think if you very clearly spell out exactly what people need to do to become a sub, you will find that number rise.
Yeah, Amy French is on the call. So if she could briefly talk about her plan or their plan for, for doing just what you suggested, Pam?
Hi, everybody. Um, yes. So we will be sourcing aggressively. We have some advertising plans that we're looking into. They, they will be expensive. So we're working on those. We've also upped our rates for substitutes, which will target more the metro and Rochester area also. So our, we're going to beef up our sub rates to $215 a day for special ed substitutes who hold a current license and are subbing in a sped role. We're hoping that will generate some more interest. We will be sourcing for four more permanent subs, one for Burnside, Jefferson, Twin Bluff, and Sunnyside. So that will put us up to eight permanent subs. We will not be doing, our plan right now is to not do the 10 openings every single day. We need some more targeted, we need people to take jobs that they're interested in and not just take a hole and not really sure where they're going. So we're looking at moving things around with TOC and I've had some meetings with them. Does anybody have any other questions?
Pam or Amy, I think, you know, we need the, and you, I know this is already part of your plan, so I'm just kind of asking the question for your answer. You know, we need a summary of what people need to do to become a sub so that we can send that information to parents. We can help have our service organizations, board members, all sharing that with people they know. That's critically important. So can you, can you tell me, do you have that draft ready to go?
Um, yes. I'll have to bring it up on my screen here. I sent it to you last week. And as I was listening, I think that there's more that we can add to it so that people are more aware that if they do, like how to become a short call sub. That's not currently in the document. It's coming up here. So I've also talked to TOC about doing some targeted advertising on their end. We have a social media blast that will be going out via Facebook that talks about our rates for subs, our rates for substitute pairs in both gen ed and sped, the contact number to call for information. And then I can also add information to that on short call subbing and the requirements for that.
Yeah, I don't see the email from last week, but if you can update it to include the information you just said. And yeah, we need to get it out, you know, we need to really push it out tomorrow and throughout Christmas break.
Yeah, we'll do it probably once a week on various media platforms. It will also be posted on our website to point people. So if they go out to AppleTrack, they'll be pointed to contact teachers on call or myself. Once we post it on AppleTrack and pump it out to JobSpot K-12 and Ed Minnesota, it will also go out to Indeed, which will reach a broader audience.
I think if we put the need out there, I think we will get people to respond. And I think the easier you can make it for people to apply and to get everything they need, I, I, I very much believe that our community will pull together and make this happen for us.
Yep. I can certainly work with Jill River tomorrow to get it on our Facebook page and I'll get it posted on AppleTrack.
Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
Do we have other questions for any of our admin team or Superintendent Anderson about the information that we've just been given? It's a lot to digest, but it's very well put together. So I thank you for that, Superintendent Anderson and folks who put this slideshow together. It's very helpful. Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, then the next piece of our agenda is to have a discussion about the transition for back to school.
Great. Let me stop sharing this presentation. And I'm going to call up the, the actual document here so other people can see it. Give me just a minute.
It is in our board book. The transition plan to return to school is item 4.2. There's background information there. And then there's a PDF on the transition plan to return to school.
Okay. Why don't we just focus on that now? I'm going to call it up. So at least I can see it here. This has been a long and complicated process for all of us. And of course, the, the biggest impact is on students and parents. So you can see that we've had a, a lot of changes, a lot of discussion over the last week in terms of when we can bring kids back into person. As you may recall, when we went into distance, there was, as part of our learning plan, we said that we wanted to bring our kids back to in-person learning as soon as possible. We've also had several discussions about when that could be. The administrative team and the other groups that, that are part of the decision-making process have, you know, gone over different options. And we landed on a plan that we posted on our website on December 16th. I wish it would have been posted on December 15th because that is a, a big difference in terms of what we can and cannot do possibly. But I'm going to just give you a little background information and then I'll explain the two options that are presented tonight as well as my recommendation. So first of all, and we already talked about this, is that, you know, we have some key criteria for decision-making. In my mind, compliance with state and federal law, including executive orders, is a key part of it. Also, local COVID rates, staff availability. The order of phased return, I've already mentioned, we want our kids with intensive service needs in as soon as possible. Then grades K through two, and then grades three through 12. We realize that all of this is contingent on having enough staff members to make it happen effectively. So the, the, the proposal that was made on December 16th, which is called Option One in this particular agenda topic, calls for in-person and/or hybrid learning for kids with intensive service needs to start on Tuesday, January 12th. That same day, we would have in-person learning for grades K through two. A week later, we would bring back in-person learning for Colville kids on Fridays, in-person learning for grades three through four, and then hybrid for grades five through 12. And then about a week later, any student who had a first semester online only commitment would be allowed to return to school if they so choose. So that's the, the basis of the recommendation that was at least made on December 16th as part of our board packet. And administrative team members, the other decision-making groups, you know, were greatly in favor of following this plan. So everything was set. Well, it turns out that on the same day, December 16th, the governor, the Minnesota Department of Education updated its safe learning plan. And that really complicated our efforts significantly because the, there are three key things. First of all, and probably most important for this discussion is the timing of any announcements to parents or to families about returning to school. So if there had been an announcement to parents that on December 15th or earlier, that we are bringing kids back on such and such a day to in-person learning, such and such a day for hybrid learning, if we did that on December 15th or earlier, we could follow through with the plans as we had announced. However, because the information was posted on December 16th, there may be a need to do a couple of other mitigation strategies in order for us to come back. So one of them would be to wait until at least January 18th before we started bringing back kids. And another requirement would be to have no more than three grades in a building come back to in-person or hybrid learning in a two-week period. And that's the part that really impacts us and makes the second option really awkward. So the second option shows that we would bring back in-person learning for grades K through 12, or K through two on January 19th. The same day, we would have hybrid for grades K, seven through nine. And then two weeks later, we would have in-person learning for grades three and four and hybrid for the older kids in the high school. And then finally, two weeks later, we'd have hybrid for grades five through six. So again, it's, you know, we cannot bring in, you know, if, if, if we have to implement those two mitigation strategies, you know, it kind of pushes everything out until March or February 15th. So here's the, the dilemma that many superintendents and school boards are struggling with. You know, you read, read the guidance and it seems clear that we have to follow Option Two, you know, that Option One would not be possible. The problem is that there are all sorts of different interpretations that are being shared out. And even after the initial presentation by MDE on the 16th, you know, they've had so many questions, so many complaints, so many different scenarios, that they came up with additional guidance this morning in terms of quote unquote clarifications to their plan that they recently announced. So, you know, there are all sorts of questions about, well, maybe we have made an announcement because we had planned to discuss this at a public board meeting, and we made that decision to discuss this at a public board meeting before the 16th. So maybe that's to notice the parents. Maybe it's the timing of when I actually posted the document on the website. You know, I followed our typical posting process for school board meetings, but that was on the 16th. So does that mean we can or cannot follow, you know, our, our plans that we had hoped to, to implement? And I could go on and on about the possible contradictions or different interpretations that have, that I've heard in many conversations, including with those at the state level. So in a nutshell, that's kind of where we are. Those are the two options. Because so much of this has happened since Wednesday and we're still trying to figure out exactly the requirements and the different interpretations, the, the best or one option that I'd like to recommend is that we would still approve implementation of Option One if on January 4th, the school board determines the plan is compliant with state law. That would give us time to outline everything that's happened as far as a decision-making process and hopefully get some feedback from the state and others as far as whether or not that's compliant. I know there are going to be a whole bunch of questions and I've just gone on for another 15 minutes, but I'm ready to, to discuss and answer any questions that I can.
Anyone? Anyone have questions? I know it takes a minute to digest all of this information, doesn't it? And if you looked at your email this morning and got the, the latest information from, from the state, it's, it's lengthy and takes, takes a long time to read. All right. So I, I have some takers. Janie and Arlen.
I think Arlen's ahead of me.
Arlen first.
Maybe I'll steal your thunder, Janie, but I am going to make the motion that Carsten recommended to us verbally here. I don't have the exact wording because of the way it's done here. Just if it gets a second, we'll get this discussion. But I want to make the motion of what Carsten gave us as his current recommended way of doing it.
Second.
All right. So motion made by Janie, seconded, no, sorry, motion made by Arlen, seconded by Janie. Then, do you want me to read the whole recommendation? Would that help, Heidi? Or do you want to just, there's four bullet, five bullet points here.
And actually, if I could jump in, I think my understanding of Arlen's recommendation was just the first part, or am I wrong, Arlen? Would it be all four of those bullet points?
Well, I, I guess I'm, you had a recommendation for us and I moved the recommendation that we do Option One, subject to confirmation, I'm putting words on it, confirmation on January 4th board meeting, that it's compliant with the governor's orders. Is that right? What, what you said?
Yep, it is.
My motion. And I guess I'm sorry, that's my motion. If you want other things, I, somebody can either amend the motion or offer an amendment, or we can take it up in a separate thing.
You know, it, if I could just throw in there, I think it might be better to discuss as a separate thing, just because there are some potential changes in the other areas.
All right. So the motion on the table is to implement the transition plan to return to school, including Option One for the timeline, if staff and substitute availability is adequate, provided that on January 4th, we aren't compliant with the governor's orders. So that would mean in-person and hybrid for intensive service needs, in-person for grades K through two, starting on the 12th of January.
January 12th, correct.
And on the 19th, we would have in-person for Colville on Fridays, in-person for grades three and four, and we'll start back with hybrid for grades five through 12. That's on the 19th. Any other discussion on that motion?
You know, I'll, Pam, if I can, sorry, I didn't put my name in, but I don't mind sticking that with that stipulation, but I guess just a question for Carsten that I originally had put my name in for is that, you know, I guess in my, again, my interpretation, and of course, it's just me, was just how much the governor's orders were around school districts that had never been in-person learning and had only been in distance learning for the whole year. That, you know, he was definitely making a point, which is wonderful, how the importance of getting especially our youngest back in in-person learning. So have you learned anything about kind of that, that idea? Or has there been much discussion around that? Because our Red Wing School District has already been in, in-person for our youngest students and hybrid. So does that put us in a different category? Is that put us in a different category? Is that per the interpretation or interpretation? Can you just comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, and I I don't think there's any doubt that, well, at least in my mind, that the the guidance that was issued on the 16th was primarily related to schools, like you said, especially in the metro area that had been in distance learning all year. And so the, there was kind of a plan on how to bring them back or, you know, bring them back to school. So and you can see that in several different areas, including transition days. Because the guidance on the 16th said that all schools coming to in-person or distance learning were required to have two planning days. And that didn't make sense to any of us in Red Wing and most rural districts because we've already done our planning. We did that last spring and we were doing it really, really well. And so that's one example, but you can see the the same kind of thinking elsewhere in the document. And, you know, they have verified some of that and changed some of their guidance, you know, with the update today. But there are many more questions, you know, still out there. So and that's kind of part of the interpretation is is, you know, where are we in terms of of following, you know, or being compliant with state law? You know, and that's something, that's one of the things we have to look at over the next two weeks. Because I I think more things are are being discussed and changed, hopefully.
Yep, thank you. And I think that's where, you know, my support of this is, is that back in August, when we had this great plan, you know, I felt like it was a good compromise. We got to keep our youngest in-person and go to hybrid for other kids and start out extremely safe, you know, safely, and it stayed that way. Is that, I think that's why parents are kind of frustrated in a way of like, where is that flexibility and go back and forth quickly that we all talked about back in August? Because it doesn't seem like that's happening now. You know, especially with these new executive orders. And I thought that was supposed to be the intention of being able to flow, you know, directly quickly through those models and be prepared to do that. So.
Yeah, I completely agree, Janie. And I, you know, I know that we've been doing, you know, a really good job with in-person learning for K through four and hybrid learning. We're following the safety protocols. I feel really good about that. And, you know, we set up our whole plan so we could pivot quickly, just like you said. I know that if I called Terry Johnson tomorrow morning, we could have buses on Wednesday. I have no doubt because everything is set. And so I was really surprised when, you know, the recent changes were made to the safe learning plan because I I feel like, you know, our our options were limited, you know, especially because, you know, I was cautious or we were cautious throughout the whole process.
Thanks, Janie. Heidi, do you want to say something?
Yeah, so the motion does not include the four final bullet points on page three, is that correct? Because we've had some conversation about just now, do we really need the planning days or are we ready to shift already? So that decision needs to be made, but I I don't know what your timeframe is for, you know, do you, do we need to decide that tonight? Do you need more input from either your staff or the MDE department? And what impact overall do those four bullet points about or the remaining three bullet points, hiring positions for permanent substitutes and additional elementary teachers? How dependent is a transition plan on all the rest of that? I I need some more clarification on that. Because I I feel like maybe we're leaving out some really important components, like we voted for it, but we don't actually have the staff to carry it out. So then what what does reality look like going ahead? Because I I don't, I don't want to put families, and I know we need to move forward, but I don't want to put families in the position tonight of thinking this is happening and then we're drawing back the reins on January 4th because none of this is, you know, this is going to be really difficult to achieve. So I think we need a balanced message here about what the reality is.
Sure. The next bullet has to do with, you know, converting student days to planning days. And of course, when I wrote this recommendation, you know, it was very clear in the the state guidance that we had to switch two of our instructional days to to planning days. This morning, it's different. We do not have to because we've been in-person or hybrid learning. And so I did check with the administrative team about this issue. Got some good feedback from a couple of teachers at a meeting earlier today. Instead of asking for two student days converted to planning days, the request is to have one planning day. And that would be on January 11th, Monday, the 11th. That's our recommendation. Again, we want people in us in person. But we recognize that there will be some needs for planning.
So that covered the second bullet point. Do we want to move through all of them right now as long as we're there? Or do you want to come back to that?
Yeah, you know, I can just briefly talk about it. You know, the, I'm assuming that the board would be supportive of the other three bulleted points. You know, we want to hire all open positions. Now, the the teachers and support personnel, we we need a full, you know, full group there. Either a full group or at least enough substitutes to cover for those that are vacant. And so I'm assuming that the board is is agreeable to that. We'd also like to hire up to four additional permanent substitutes through the end of the school year. Again, that's $200 per day, per substitute for every day for the rest of the school year. And so I put that down because, you know, I want to make sure that we all understand that if we're going to come back into person, you know, that we will need some resources to to help make that happen effectively. Again, I'm assuming that the board is perfectly fine with that because we need the substitutes, but I I wanted to include it. The last one, I feel so much better now than I did about a week ago. I was very concerned that we would have even more kids wanting to come back to in-person learning second semester in grades K through four. Very concerned. And so, you know, I wanted to lay it out there that, you know, hey, if we have a lot more coming back, we, you know, we have our room capacity limits that we have to follow to maintain social distancing guidelines. And so I was hoping to get the authority to hire some additional teachers if necessary. Right now, I don't think that's the case. You know, but I wanted to include that as a bulleted point, just to be very clear that that might be a possibility. But I'm feeling really good about, you know, the relatively low number of kids who have been online only who want to come back second semester in grades K through four. There may be a need somewhere along the line, you know, because there are a lot of variables and a lot of people shifting their their thinking. But right now, we certainly don't need five. I'll tell you that.
Thank you for going.
And I I just wanted to, as you had packaged it all up, so I just wanted to be clear to the board, the public, you know, the staff who are listening, that, you know, there's a lot of components and a lot of moving parts here. And to have full recognition of that.
Thank you.
And I think it's really important that you, we added the subject to confirmation of compliance with the governor's orders because I don't, I don't want to be out of compliance either. And I realize the timing of this and maybe the decision-making process of that timing wasn't quite optimal. So I realize everybody, you know, across the district, a lot of, or across the state, a lot of districts are really struggling with this. So I can move forward on this. So thank you.
Mr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Point of clarification from Superintendent Anderson. He used the word law, and now we're using the word governor's orders. There's a difference. So which one is, I have a couple of other comments, too.
Yeah, and, you know, at least my belief is that we should follow state law and the governor's orders, you know, as they're, as they're issued.
Okay.
And I I realize that, you know, I'm sure that there will be groups or people who are challenging the legitimacy of of executive orders and those kinds of things. But my personal belief is that we should, you know, fulfill, you know, you know, state law as well as, you know, all governors' orders.
Well, I just want to make sure we're clear because two weeks from now we may have that have that discussion. And then I, I mean, we heard loud and clear as board members and people, community members. There's overwhelming support by parents and people, students, they want to get back in class, back in school. This is a start, not probably as great, or not great, I shouldn't say not probably what I was kind of hoping for. But it's certainly option one is better than option two, as we're laying out here. My question also is, I'm trying to, do I have pulled up the transition plan? Where's option one? Are you talking, Mrs. Haslam, and Mr. Nemnich talked at our, one of our past meetings about bringing students with English as a second language and Mr. Nemnich, I don't want to butcher up what he said, but his group of people. Are those covered under the first bullet point? Or is that a separate topic?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I think it's important to clarify. And it comes down to the definition of intensive service needs. And so I know that both Kelly Haslam, well, actually Kelly Haslam, George Nemnich and Sheri Johnson are on the call, and so we can certainly have that discussion. You know, it's not, for example, approving that would not include all kids with disabilities. It would be for, you know, there are certain criteria to to qualify as intensive service needs, the same with English learners. And, you know, Sheri, could you provide a response since you work with both of those groups?
Sure. And answering your question, Jim, yes, the students who are EL, students that have disabilities, perhaps students who are experiencing homelessness or they're at risk, those all could be included in that first. We can bring them in and try to get some services in place for them in moving forward. It wouldn't necessarily be all of our English language learners. We would have some criteria. It's the ones that are at the highest level of need.
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that, Mrs. Johnson. So I'd like to have this discussion probably after the motion because it's kind of, it may be tied to it, but I truly think, you know, January 4th or 5th is a good day to get them back in school, to get the process started because, but I can't, the motion failed, and I voted in favor of a motion that fails can be brought back by those that, I can't remember if it's the people that I don't know what side of it is on. But I don't believe, I'm not sure if I could bring back that motion or not, but I'd like to have that discussion after we vote on option one. And your recommendation. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other discussion? The motion.
Pam, it's Mike. Can can that be added as a friendly amendment to the motion or no?
To just discuss what?
No, to to suggest that we get those most in need in school as soon as possible, as opposed to waiting until everybody else starts moving in.
Well, it it's in, it's a part of the motion already because option one says that in-person slash hybrid for intensive service needs. So that's a part of the motion already. We just haven't discussed or identified what those intensive service needs groups are.
Right, but it's it's for the 12th rather than the 4th or 5th.
Right.
I I think you're right, Mr. Christensen. You, that could be asked, offered as a friendly amendment to do that. And then we have to vote on that friendly amendment and then go forward. So, yeah, you could do that if you want.
But.
Carson, you're on mute.
It's something that we missed in the last meeting. And it's, you know, oh, five days.
Oh, we're losing you, Mike.
Just send them a little. No.
You broke up, Mike. Didn't get much of that at all.
I suppose we could maybe, no. Take it over, Jim.
You broke up pretty bad. I'm in the motion to look at.
Yeah, I'm gone.
Bringing the individuals, the groups that Mrs. Haslam and Mr. Nemnich brought before us a few weeks back to look at the possibility of bringing them in school on, starting on January 5th.
Is that even possible to, I mean, without having the consultation of the administrators and, I mean, is that even possible to add to this plan right now?
Right, that's my concern.
And I have a big issue, question about that, actually, too.
Go ahead.
You need a second.
Yeah, if we had a second, then we can discuss the amendment.
Do I have a second? Is there a second?
I would actually like to do a different friendly amendment, if that's possible. If there's not, I don't want to be rude, so.
Go ahead.
I'd like to do a friendly amendment to it to actually just move up that whole block, the in-person hybrid for intensive service needs and the in-person for grades K through two, beginning January 4th. And see if there's any interest in that.
So the friendly amendment is to move all those dates up to start on the 4th? Is there a second for that friendly amendment?
Would you amend it to a 5th? Do we have a date of start? Because they're not in school now for two weeks.
Well, don't they go back January 4th? Isn't that the first day back?
In order, you can't discuss how to make an amendment to make after amendment motions been made. Either you get a second or you don't.
So do I have a second on that friendly amendment? I'll ask one more time. Do I have a second on that friendly amendment?
I'll vote, I'll make a motion to have a second. If you need to do mine, I'll do hers. I'll second.
Okay, so the friendly amendment is to move all the dates up, starting on January 4th?
Yeah, if I, if I could, and by the way, I wish I could recommend a yes vote on this. But I've been told by the state that, you know, let's say if if we had issued a plan on December 15th, this would be a non-issue. We could do it. But because it was issued on December 16th, you know, there are questions about whether or not we can start before the 18th, you know, whether or not we have to have a rolling start and those kinds of things. One thing that Heather Mueller from the Minnesota Department of Education made very clear is that if we're going to make that argument, that it would have to be the exact plan that we had announced on the 15th. And so, you know, she recommended not changing it in any way. So again, you know, I wish I had a crystal ball. I wish I knew all the answers because I'd be very supportive of it if I knew it wouldn't screw everything else up, you know, in the process. But theoretically, if we change the plan, that would lessen our argument to bring kids back in before the 18th and have the two-week rolling start. So again, it's going to be up to the board, but I just wanted to to make that clear that, you know, there could be some positive consequences and there could be some negative ones as well. I don't know if that would be true for the intensive service needs because my understanding has always been that that we can bring them in anytime. But I would have more concerns about bringing kids, grades K through two, just for that reason.
Right.
Makes sense.
So now you've got an amendment that you need to vote on, and then you need to vote on the emotion prior to that.
We vote on the motion first and then the amendment?
No.
Correct, yes. All right. So the friendly amendment was to move all the dates up to start on January 4th, 2020. Made by Janie, seconded by Jim. We'll start with a roll call vote with Mr. Bryant.
Based upon this information of Superintendent Anderson, I'm gonna have to say no to that, to the amendment.
Mr. Christensen?
Uh, no.
Mr. Derrick's?
No.
Ms. Fair?
I'm still going to vote yes, because I don't think this is going to pass anyway, but I think it's best for Redwings, so I'll leave it at that.
Ms. Jones?
No.
And Cher's going to vote no. So then we have, we go back to the motion that's on the table, that has been discussed, implementing the transition plan 11220. Actually, Carson, you need to change that to 11221.
Oh, for Pete's sake, I've already started that regular mistake I make for about two months. Definitely will change that as a typographical error.
So, so we're just, are we voting on just the first piece, or do you want to vote on all the bullet points? Because that...
Yeah, I think the motion on the table is just for the first piece.
Okay, yes. Thank you for that clarification, that's what I thought.
Yeah, there might be other amendments, you know, I just don't know, or additional discussion. But yeah, it'd just be for the first bullet for now.
Okay. Any other discussion on that first bullet point?
Well, my understanding with the Mike discussion that started out with trying to move up to January 4th or 5th about intensive service needs, students going first. I think Jer, I was concerned about some timing issues for staff to be able to do that. Sheri said she could speak to that, so I wondered if this was the opportunity to hear Sheri's comments on that?
So, I'll jump in there. Yes, we can bring the intensive needs students back at any time. That would include your special education students, EL students, students who are homeless, that whole group I said before. But you'll know that, you'll notice that in Carson's write-up, staffing is our major piece. So we have worked and worked, well, not we, in the case of EL, Kelly Hasmer. That team has worked to know if they have the staffing. Sonia Smith, our director in Redwing, has worked to try to get the number of paraprofessionals and such in place to do that. We believe we will be set and ready to go on the 11th for that. If we get back, and for instance, Kelly says that she can start on, you know, I don't, I don't have a calendar for, the 9th, you know, we can examine that. So we're not held to those same timeframes with that group of students that the other students are held to. But it's going to come down to staffing and building readiness for that with the administrators.
So we don't need specific board action for that group?
Correct.
Okay, so that is very helpful to understand that. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, are we, Arlen, go ahead.
The reason, this is probably out of context for me normally, but that I believe we should take a look at that option one, and I made that motion, is I have been studying our county numbers and the trends and everything, and it is my belief that we are on track to be in a position to offer in-school learning at that time. I am sure that if trends change, or whatever, then at the January meeting, there will be more discussion. But at this time, I think we need to put it out there, let families know what we're intending to do, what we want to do, and then it's up to interpretation of the governor's orders as we go through, or potentially a change in whether it's safe to do it, and I'm sure that would be brought up at our next board meeting, which is prior to bringing kids back. So that's where I'm at, and I will be voting for my motion.
All right, are we ready to vote on the motion? All right. So, Mr. Bryant, nope, sorry, Mr. Christensen, you are up first for that motion. Sorry, Jim.
I will vote aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Cher votes aye, so that passes 6-0. Wonderful. All right, so now we need to tackle the rest of that recommendation by the superintendent. It's converting, in the documentation in our board book, it says converting January 8th and 11th from student days to planning days, and I believe that's already amended to just read January 11th planning day, is that correct? Yep. And then hiring all open positions, including teachers, support personnel, custodians, and food service workers. Bullet three is hiring up to four additional permanent substitutes through the end of the 2021 school year. And the hiring of additional elementary teachers as needed to maintain reasonable class sizes for online-only teachers, and provide appropriate social distancing for students in grades K through 4. Mr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a question, we're talking about hiring people, bringing people back. Were, are we going back to the numbers that we were when everybody's in school? Or are you looking at having staff there for when we were at the hybrid, which we are going back to? You know, it's kind of open, and I don't like, I like to have that tidied up a bit. And you're on mute, Superintendent Anderson?
Thank you. Yeah, the goal for hiring open positions would be to go back to having enough staff that we needed at the beginning of this year. So it would be assuming grades K through 4 in-person, and then 5 through 12 hybrid.
Heidi?
I'd like to make a motion, as you just stated, Board Chair Rowe, about the conversion of January 11th from a planning day, hiring the opening, open positions, the four additional permanent substitutes, and any elementary teachers as needed to maintain reasonable class sizes, et cetera, et cetera.
Mike, pull a second.
Motion made by Heidi, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion? All right, we'll start the roll call vote with
Yeah, I threw it in real quick. I just, Madam Chair, may I just make a comment?
Yeah, 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 go ahead, Sheri.
Thank you. From Mrs. Johnson, Sheri Johnson, I don't know if this is the right time I'm going to do it, because we're going on this. I'd like to see those kids that we talked about get back as soon as possible. Those kids that you said you check with Mrs. Hasmer and that. Please, please, please do what you can to get them going, so, as we want all the kids to go back, but those are the ones we were certainly stalking about a few weeks ago. Thank you.
I will.
I'll second that.
All right.
And also good thanks to all the administrators who pulled this stuff together. I mean, it's a huge, huge chore. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Okay, Arlen.
So the motion, it was the remaining four bullet points, made by Heidi, seconded by who's Mike? Mike, thank you. Mr. Derrick's, we'll start the roll call vote with you. Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes 6-0. We will all certainly be very excited to see everyone back in our hallways in the new year.
Yeah, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now resuming our agenda, going back to item 2.4, Redwing High School course changes.
We have three staff members from the high school who will each give a brief presentation about a course that he or she is either responsible for or helped plan for. I think you're going to like what you're going to hear. And so if we could start with Mick Wendland, and then we'll have Molly Kiefer and Tammy Mickelson. We'll just go in that order, just to briefly describe what's being proposed. We do not need approval today, that'll come in January or even February when we do the program of studies, but we wanted to share some great planning with you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board, for the opportunity to speak tonight. And thank you to Heidi, Janie, and Mike for your years of service with the Board, and for working with each of you. So much appreciation for all the work that you've done. The course that I'm proposing tonight is not a new course, it's a new way that we're doing a course. So it's, we're going to shift the independent living course that we currently offer, merge it with some of the components of our personal finance, call it Adulting 101. So it's going to be when kids leave and they're like, why did I never learn these things in school? That's what we're going to put in there. I have, I'd like to make it a plan for it to be a required course, aimed at juniors, so that we can talk about personal finance as it might play into students' interests in post-secondary education planning. If we had it as a senior year, if you take it second semester, senior year, and then wanted, got some insight on how you wanted to plan your finances, but you'd already applied for school, if that was part of your planning, then having that junior year would be more helpful. So, and it would be components of personal finance and other components that are currently covered in the independent living course. So it would just be some merges of those things, and then also just to have it as a part of a requirement for graduation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Can you describe, Mick, a little bit more of sort of the standards or the components that will, I mean, some of it seems obvious to me, and other pieces not so much?
Sure, and I guess a little background on it, too. I was part of a Manufacturers Association meeting last year, and they were talking about with their workers in retention, some of the businesses were seeing the greatest success in keeping their employees, were the employees that were able to manage their finances. So the ones that were able to budget well, and to plan for their lifestyle, they could see that they had better attendance at work, and then better retention. So the standards that would be in there, I guess I can't speak to specific numbers. I'd be happy to provide those when we do the, when we look for approval in January. But it would be maintaining an independent budget, it would be looking at rental leasing, looking at mortgages, looking at how to apply for loans, whether that's for a car or for school loans. And then also just kind of daily life things, time and management organizational skills. And those are part of the current course description for independent living as well.
Okay, thanks, that helps.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. White, one, thank you for sharing that, because you're right, they get out there, talk to numbers that don't know, people that don't have a balance of checkbook, or check to see that their payments are, or the charges are proper on their credit card, and go over the pay stub with them, too, because I've had a few and say, who is this FICA guy that takes so much money out of my check?
Man, that FICA guy.
That's the, that's another one that just kind of throws me. I mean, if we could, if you could have also teach them to do all the other little things that we expect, and they should be done throughout their childhood, but that's a good one, to get them going and getting on the finance part. I like hearing that, and thanks.
And in the springtime, I had the opportunity to survey a number of our graduates, our alumni, just to get their perspective on the things that they wanted to pass on to students in this year, and also our graduates going out. And there were a number that cited that course, were some of the most beneficial things that they were able to apply moving forward. So, and that kind of hits students across different plans moving forward. So whether they went on to continuing levels of education, went on to school, and depending on different degrees, you know, those, with individual interests highlighted, of course, you know, courses like Mick's Mickelson's, if they went on to, you know, advanced mathematics. But some others, you know, maybe not so much. But that was kind of a common theme for them, was to see that those were skills that they were needing to use right away.
Thank you, that's super helpful. Any other comments or questions for Mick?
This is Mike. I have a question about, you want to make it a required course? In junior year?
That's correct. As it currently stands, this is an elective opportunity, so students can take either personal finance or independent living. And just from the feedback that we've gotten from students, and from the Manufacturers Association, on the benefits for students transitioning into adulthood, as it relates to planning for their future, that it seems like a good move that we could help students be better prepared for life after high school.
What kind of courses would we, would kids not be taking in that case, if they were required to take that one?
It would take up an elective credit, one-half elective credits would be a semester-long course.
Right, it's, I'm old, I know, but it seems like to make it a requirement is for something that I wouldn't think that every student needs. But you hear enough about how everybody thinks every student needs it, so maybe it's not a bad idea. But I just, I know we left, we lowered our requirements for graduation, the number of credits required. So this would either bump that back up, or bump it back up. But anyway, it's just, it's hard for me to see that as a required course. I would think that there would be ways to learn that stuff, and even maybe before junior year in high school. Maybe that's a little late for learning that, but, but anyway, carry on, I appreciate it. I appreciate the effort going into it.
And, you know, there's quite a bit of work that's already been done. Abby Schroeder, when she was with the district, put together a great curriculum, and Steve Clark already has components together. So we'd be merging some work that's already been done on their part as well. And I would say that with it being offered, some students are not electing to take it. I also think that there are students that are pursuing higher-level academic courses, and might, and skip over some of our elective opportunities sometimes. So I think this would be a way to kind of guide them towards seeing the value in this course, too. I don't know if we would have to up the graduation requirement. We, students have the opportunity to earn 32 credits, I believe the requirement is 28 to graduate, starting with next year's class, with the addition of the study hall opportunity. So I don't know if we would have to increase the graduation requirement, it would just be an opportunity to fill it.
No, thanks, appreciate it, Mick.
Molly, your turn.
All right, thank you all for having me, and congratulations to our board members who are ending their terms with us. Thank you for your service, and Pam, thanks for coming back, we appreciate it a great deal. I know I've watched many meetings sort of on the edge of my seat, trying to find out what's going to happen to my future. So it's weird to be presenting at a board meeting now. But I'm here to talk about a new elective class in the Language Arts Department called Native Literature. It was sort of born at an open house night, when I overheard Principal Nemnich talking to a social studies teacher, and he was sort of schmoozing him into thinking about offering a native history class. And I said, oh, it'd be really amazing if we could, like, have a literature class happen at the same time, and maybe find interdisciplinary ways for them to connect. So this is sort of one way to test those waters, to see what kinds of interests are out there, and to just sort of put front and center some literature that really needs that attention, and should be a priority in our district, I believe. Not only because we serve such a large and wonderful native population at Prairie Island, but also because these are our first literatures as a country. So I'll focus on things like oral storytelling, and the structure of that, and oral history. I do hope to bring in interdisciplinary elements, so that they can do research projects sort of in the arts, or, you know, researching other native people and presenting on that kind of information. I have a lot of connections with living native authors, too. I have an MFA in creative writing, and I run a small press, a nonprofit literary press. And so, you know, some of my authors are native, but I also know a lot of authors from being a writer myself. And I'm hoping to be able to bring them in, in this, these really great new technological ways to visit the classroom, and have kids interact with living, breathing, writing authors. So yeah, that's, I'm really excited about it, and I'm really lucky to have the good support that I have in this district. And I should say thank you to the supportive people that have helped me get this class together and put it forth. So thank you, Jess and George, who are both huge supporters and players in this. And Prairie Island community members, Phil White and Nikki Buck, have helped a lot. And then the English department has been very supportive, especially Joni Heineman and Rachel Wark. So thanks to those folks, it takes a village to put these things together. So it's really nice to have a huge network, you know, making sure that I'm doing, I'm doing this right by the kids.
Well, this is marvelous, this is great news. Thanks for sharing tonight.
Thank you.
I'm excited for the future now. Thank you so much, I mean, that's, wow, I'm just really pleased, thank you.
Yeah, I know if people could see Molly's proposal, I mean, I think you'd be awestruck. I mean, it is very well done, and very respectful, and encouraging. And in addition to what Molly said, addition to what Molly said is, you know, we're also, you know, Molly and others are working with a Native American Parent Committee. So the idea was shared just recently, and I'm sure there'll be plenty of support from that group as well to make this the most meaningful experience possible. So thank you, Molly, for working with so many others to make this happen.
So this is on for next year if our seniors could take this, right, Molly?
Yes.
So, and we're fair, it would be perfect, don't you think?
Yeah. Yes, I think so. I hope he takes it.
Great job.
Thank you.
It is exciting to think and, and be adding some different courses. I think that's really commendable. And, you know, we need to, as a district, always be looking at ways that we can continually bring new things to our students. So this, this just makes us all very happy. So thank you for the effort and, in doing that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did you have one more, Superintendent Anderson?
Tammy Mickelson is here to present the third course.
Hello, hello, Tammy Mickelson. I'm a math teacher at Red Wing High School. And I just want to give a quick shout out to Tim Bose for pushing the math department to get to the 21st century and offering our concurrent, concurrent enrollment classes. Last year, anything beyond Algebra II in math is an elective credit. So yes, kids take AP Calculus as an elective credit, which is crazy to think about not being required. So anything beyond Algebra II is elective. So last year with Minnesota State, we were able to add, once kids finish Algebra II, we were able to not add, but change our courses so that when kids take college algebra, pre-calculus, calculus, and AP calculus, they get concurrents credit, they get college credit through Minnesota State, which is amazing. And at the time, we wanted to add Intro to Stats, but we thought, well, let's just start with what we already have and get that under our belts before we add another. So that was just last year that now, so this current year, kids are getting college credit for college algebra, pre-calculus, calculus through Minnesota State. Jeff Finnholm actually pioneered all of this seven years ago, adding the U of M course, Basic and Applied Stats. It's an amazing statistics course where kids do a lot of analytical thinking. They use Tinker Plots, they do a lot of group work, and they use real world data. It's an amazing class. Kids can get a liberal arts math credit through the U of M, and then, you know, they can see how that transfers to their new college, or the college that they choose. So the class that we are adding is an Intro to Stats class that is also through Minnesota State. It is different than Jeff's class. Both classes do teach statistics, but this class is more of a traditional stats class. It's more computational, and it has more of the basic hardcore calculations, where they're calculating the mean, the standard deviation, and how far away are you from the mean and things like that. So the kids could take one of the classes or both classes. I guess it just kind of depends on, you know, where it fits into their flight path and what they're interested. If they want to get, you know, the whole aspect of stats, they can certainly take both. If they're only, you know, looking at what their college takes and what their college will approve, you know, they can either look at the Basic and Applied Stats, or the, through the U of M, or the Minnesota State Math 1230, which will be the Intro to Stats class. So any questions?
Go ahead, Mick.
Uh, let's see. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Tammy. This is a class that I think should be required, a requirement. Statistics are used.
Oh, go ahead.
You go, girl. Statistics are, are everywhere in this world. And as, I'll use my Mark Twain quote, there's, there's lies, there's damned lies, and then there's statistics. And people really need to understand statistics in order to figure out what is going on when people are throwing statistics at you. The only other thing that would make this complete would be if we had a, an informal logic course required in the school, so that everybody would be able to understand whether somebody is arguing from a real position and deducting to their logical point, or whether they are arguing in a circle and saying something and then supporting it by saying it again. But that's a whole nother story, and it's, I don't hold my breath for that. But the two, two vital things that everybody should, should understand is informal logic and statistics. So thank you, Tammy.
Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Molly and Tammy, thank you very much for that information, as Mick did too there. He provided very good information on kids, different, what they need. You provided a, I could see the enthusiasm on Molly's face when she was talking about it, and the excitement on Tammy's going forward, too. So thank you for sharing that, and I look forward for reports down the road as to how it's going and how it's working. So thanks.
I'm always happy to hear and see that there's more concurrent classes being offered. And I know that's no easy task. I know there's a lot that goes behind being able to offer that, because our, our teachers have to, to have a certain level of education and extra classwork to be able to pull that off. So I appreciate the effort of our, our administration and certainly our teachers for being willing to do that, because I do know and recognize that that's a lot of extra work that is needed to be able to pull that off. So thank you. I'm excited. I love stats, so maybe I'll tune into that one. Thanks, Tammy. Anything else?
I wanted Pam to, Jess, her backbone on this. I'm sure she also was quite a contributor to helping these great teachers do this. So thanks to Jess and our, our great department. So, great job, teachers and admin.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And before I go, yes, I also want to thank Jess for all of her work getting all of this through, and George, it takes time. And, you know, there is a lot of communication that needs to be done with Minnesota State and the U of M. And it's great that we can offer so many credits where kids can just show up to high school, hopefully here, and be able to, you know, get college credit while they're right in the high school walls. It's, it's just awesome that we're expanding and adding more classes where kids can continue to get college credits towards wherever, you know, their passion leads them. And I also want to thank all of you board members. I know it's endless, endless hours of time that you guys put in, and Mike, Janie, and Heidi sat across the table from all of you. And so I did this at the end, but your hours are very much appreciated. Thank you.
You can tell that's why Tammy and I are such good friends, so.
Yeah.
Well said, Tammy.
Yeah.
So this will be, it'll be hard to follow this up, but I did want to tell you guys where the process was and how this got to here, so that you kind of know the next step. So first, it goes through the department, the departments, and they kind of talk about where it fits. And then we talk about where does it fit as far as courses that need to be replaced, based on putting new ones in, because we can't continuously add classes with staffing. So we talk about what we take out and, to make sure we can go forward with this. So it went through that. And then also the Curriculum and Instruction Team asked a lot of good questions. A lot of community members and parents asked some good questions. And then it went to talk about course descriptions, and now we're here. So then that'll be part of the new, the three new courses for when you guys adopt, hopefully the new packet of new courses for Red Wing High School. So thank you all.
Well, and a big thanks to you, Jess.
If I could just, quick add, you know, I'll go back to what Pam was talking about, too. It's nice to be able to offer these classes. This is what will separate Red Wing from other districts around us, and that's why these, these types of classes are really important. And we have quite a few already, but this is what will help separate us. And obviously, that's something that's very attractive for our district.
Absolutely. Thanks for saying that, George, because you're exactly right. We do need to make sure that we're offering the, the newest and the latest, and always making sure that is, it is, believe it or not, we are in competition with other districts and schools. So this is important. Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
All right. Anything, any last things on the course changes? All right, then we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, School Board Reports. There's committee meeting minutes there for operations personnel and our special operations committee meeting. Does, why don't we, just for the public's sake, do you want to give just a quick update, Arlen, on the operations committee? Anything that you'd like to share?
Well, I don't think there's really much. We had a extra meeting or two involved with the solar land lease that the board approved here at our last special board meeting. So yeah, maybe some people aren't up on it, but we had a special board meeting before the workshop, or, not sure what the right term is for our new incoming board member orientation. We had a, and we approved the leasing of 10 acres of land around the communication tower for a solar lease, which will generate if, just under $500,000 if they take for 25 years, and over $750,000 if they take the entire 35-year period. So otherwise, there really not much was taking place in the last two weeks.
Thank you. Any updates from personnel?
You know, we'll be talking a lot about ours coming up, but I guess just quickly, that Director of Technology is on the consent agenda. We had a lot of discussion even at our last board meeting, just about what that looks like for the future. And I think that will continue. And then it sounds like, again, the grievance has been settled, so that is good news. And then we'll be hitting that closed session for negotiation. So, you know, I had Ask Kirsten, it sounds like we're all shored up for negotiations at this point, so I'll hand that off in January to whoever else is new on that negotiations team. So have fun.
Thanks for that. Policy and legislative, any updates there?
Sure. So we had a meeting prior to our legislators meeting, and I just want to point out to new board members coming in and the ones that will be remaining, all of the advocacy group, education advocacy group legislative platforms for 2021 are listed in there. Typically, that, our committee reviews all of those and tries to just pick out some commonalities. So you get some common messaging reinforcement across your advocacy efforts for the legislative session. So I would urge you to take a look at those. We are members of MSBA and MREA, the Minnesota Rural Education Association also. So, and then we also include schools for equity in education. That's kind of a mixed group of large schools and small schools. MREA is usually small. MSBA is all-inclusive. Every single district belongs, at least, you know, this year. And typically, we're at 99 or 100% of districts across the state. And then AMSD is the Association for Metro School Districts. And even though you think, well, those are the metro areas, but there's a lot of commonalities as far as special ed equalization pieces. So I would urge people to take a look at that. And you also have Sherri Johnson's School Finance Working Group presentation and full report. So pay attention to those things. Those are huge drivers in the next several years of education funding. And it comes like at a difficult time, when we're experiencing such financial grimness ahead, perhaps in the state budget. Not so much as this biennium, but the next one. So you may find that people are shoring back this session because they're anticipating worse ahead. So anyway, if, for the new folks that are listening, those things are out there on the horizon. Briefly from MSBA, the, there are officer workshops and negotiation seminars coming up in the spring, too, after the leadership conference. I believe with Mike, the departure of Mike and I, no one on the board has done a negotiation seminar. So you might want to look into that, especially new folks. And then officer workshops. There are two people running for my director seat at the leadership conference, so I will be with you, or I retain that directorship until that next election. So I will see you again at the leadership conference. And then a little bit of a brief breakdown of the federal AIDS package that hopefully got passed. They have set aside $82 billion for local schools and higher education. And MSBA is saying $54 billion is being cut out for K-12. And also $4 billion for the Governor's Discretionary Fund. We also, we benefited, public schools in Minnesota benefited from the Governor's Discretionary Fund last time around. And then $7 billion for broadband. We are fortunate here in Red Wing that most of us have pretty good service, but it's an equity issue across the rest of the state. And then $10 billion for childcare and $22 billion for state and local health-related, COVID health-related issues, too. So I don't know if that's where the school district might experience another carve-out from a county government or state government as far as those discretionary funds go. And of course, $10 billion childcare supports the workers we have, the children of, you know, the children that are in the seats. So be, be on the lookout for that. Those are some preliminary numbers. And that's all I have for report.
Thank you, Heidi. I'm going to make MSBA updates. We're going to have to probably still call you and get those. Let's see, finance, anything to share about finance, Mike?
No, we're not having a meeting this month. Everything is topsy-turvy in finance, but we're doing pretty well considering.
Thank you. Any other GCED? Is there anything you want to share about that, Arlen?
Not really, with those certificates of participation. We did have to go back to another meeting here last week to approve that as a board, and that is completed, or should be completed now with the signatures. And so that's, pretty much covers it for now.
Okay, thanks. Any other committee updates that anyone would like to share?
You know, last thing, Chair Row, I will, I'm going to bring it up when we talk about the Health Partners rebate, but I just wanted to make sure you knew we had met it as an LMC committee, and then I'll, I'll comment on it when we hit that. But that'll be coming, just so everybody knows.
Okay, thanks. Then administrative reports. Anything else to share with us, Superintendent Anderson?
You know, I'll just highlight two topics in my report. First of all, a quick update about the survey of families open and rolling out of the district. Don Wedern has taken the lead on this. She's focusing on this year's families, largely because our EdFi and Student Services Coordinator had called parents this past summer and into the fall if they did not adequately complete their request to go to a different school district. So she actually called many families to find out, you know, their reasons for, for leaving. So we have much of that data already. And so Don will be working with her over the, you know, I'm sure she has been working with her and kind of wrap that up for this year's families. And then we can talk about, you know, calling from previous years. So just a quick update. And then finally, online learning provider. Sherri gave a presentation a few meetings ago about, you know, their application for providing online-only services. And, you know, I've met with her since then, just to verify what exactly is proposed, because I think that's really important. And it seems like a good option for us to continue to participate in. So, you know, we could participate under GCD's umbrella, but participating students would continue to be our students. Our teachers would still continue to be our teachers. And there'd be a very nominal cost, you know, if it's hundreds of dollars or a few thousands of dollars for us to participate on a yearly basis. The biggest concern I have is that right now their application does not include grades K through three. And in my mind, that is a critical piece of this. I will say, though, that we still need to present information to the administrative team to make sure that we fully understand what's going on there, and then we can, you know, certainly move forward. But I just wanted to give an update on both of those things.
All right. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Superintendent Anderson? All right. Then the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Anybody need to or want to pull anything off of the con- Anybody need to or want to pull anything off of the consent agenda for tonight?
Arlen would like to pull item nine.
Item nine is the hiring of Mike Pagel as interim director of technology.
Item chair?
Yeah.
I could pull the minutes from the seventh off. I just want to comment, not, I just want me to comment on them, that's all.
From the seventh, Jim?
Yes.
Anything else?
Janie will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with those two items taken off.
Do I have a second? Anyone?
Heidi Jones, second.
Thank you. Motion made by Janie, seconded by Heidi to accept the consent agenda minus number nine and pulling the minutes of December 7th. We'll begin with a roll call vote of Janie Fair.
Hi.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
And Sheri votes aye. All right, discussion on number nine.
All right. The reason I pulled this is I, Mr. Pagel is a full-time principal and he's taken on these other duties. And I just think, in my opinion, the $15,000 stipend is excessive, so I'll be voting no on that.
And if I could explain just a little bit about this particular proposal. You know, the, you know, I did include kind of a background information sheet for why it was included in the consent agenda, including some of the bulleted points or things that he's done this year. The first year of implementation of our technology program has been significant. And so that's why the request was made and recommended by the Personnel Committee for $15,000 for the year. That does include extra days from this past summer that he spent working on technology, and so that's a chunk of that paid.
Any other discussion?
Could you clarify how many extra days, Carson?
You know, we came to the conclusion that it would be, you know, $15,000. I don't have the exact number of days to share, but I would guess that it's somewhere between probably five and eight, or even five to 10, plus extra work that he's doing during the school year.
Any other discussion? On number nine?
By the way, if I could also add, I think it was already brought up earlier in today's meeting. But I did talk to Jess and Mike just recently about next year. And, you know, we're going to formulate some different possibilities, you know, as far as moving forward, so that we won't have one of our principals also do that work. Of course, we have cost constraints, we have other competing priorities, we really have to weigh it out. But, you know, that would be our preference is to step into a different kind of arrangement. And I know the Personnel Committee members, you know, brought that up as well.
Right, we did talk a lot about the sustainability of that position and being able to make sure that our principal is giving enough time to the school that he or she needs to be supervising and administrating. But also, the technology piece is a part of the referendum promise that we have made to the community. So we want to make sure that we are doing that position fair justice as well. Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Arlen looked up a good point, good question on it. And Mr. Pagel does a nice job as principal there. There's no doubt about it. He's a bright young guy, handles technology. I'm smart enough to realize technology is the future, and I surround myself with good people on it. Not that I'm the one that can take it on. But I guess, I'm a little come from the private sector to a degree, and I think that maybe Arlen is, and I don't want to put words in his mouth. But we all hear struggling on the business side, making ends meet to hopefully get business in, doing more with less. So I guess, I'm not saying he isn't entitled to something. I'm not so sure $15,000 is it, like Arlen said, for the eight, the 10, whatever days you had, plus a few extra things. So it's not that I don't value him, it's not that I don't think he can bring a lot to the table, but I think it's, where we're at right now, it's higher than I can go along with as well.
Yeah, I'm glad that you brought that up, Jim. Just so I have a chance to clarify, you know, the rough estimate for additional days were for last summer. You know, like from July 1st until the beginning of the school year. You know, he's also spent some days on weekends. He spends a lot of extra hours, you know, over and above what he does as the principal. And so really, it's more than just a few days last summer. It's a comprehensive work that he's been doing, especially implementing it for the first year. One thing that, you know, Kevin Johnson used to do a lot of the infrastructure and a lot of the recommendations for instructional technology. When we moved over to our new arrangement, you know, we have Charlie McLaughlin serving as the infrastructure technology systems administrator, and then Mike took on kind of the instructional technology piece as well as kind of oversight. Mike is doing more of that kind of work than what Kevin used to do, you know, when he was, you know, also served as Director of Technology. So there's been some kind of shifting. That's why Charlie's salary dent has increased as much as what I, you know, we had estimated last May. And that's, you know, another reason why the suggestion is to pay Mike that $15,000 a month.
Heidi?
I'll make a motion that we approve the $15,000 for Mike Pagel's stipend.
And Mike will second.
All right, and then Janie, you had your name in the queue?
Um, I guess I don't know, I suppose we can comment now that we've taken it off the consent agenda. But, you know, if I remember from our Personnel Committee discussion, this was within the budget because we had cost savings in other areas, right, Carson? So I just wanted to share that with the group too. And then my other question was, is this stipend for the whole year? Or is the board going to expect another stipend for another half of the year?
Oh, yeah, this would be the stipend for the entire fiscal year, so it's a 12-month stipend.
Thank you.
All right, so Heidi made the motion to accept the hiring of Mike Pagel as interim director of technology at $15,000 for the 2021 school year, seconded by Mike. Any other discussion?
Mike, this is Mike. I'll just say that the work that he did and accomplished over the summer to get our district up to the level that it's at now is fairly incredible. Definitely a lot of effort and time went into it. $15,000 well spent, if you ask me. My concern is maintaining that type of schedule forever. So I'll be gone, but that'll be your all's problem. But it's definitely worth the 15 grand. Like you said, we got some money savings in some places, and we spent it in a very effective manner. Mike's done a great job. Thanks.
All right, we will go ahead and vote on that motion. We start the roll call with Heidi Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
No.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
No.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
And Sheri votes aye. So that passes four to two. And then we wanted to talk about the minutes from 12/7.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep.
The reason, I'm pointing out 5.4, summary of evaluation of superintendent, and based upon the fact that we weren't had the luxury of reviewing the investigation until on the 8th. And I reviewed that, and I want to have a conversation with the chair on that. I'm not publicly talking about it at all here. I'd like to, after seeing that, I cannot be in favor of the wording of the public summary of the superintendent evaluation that's in the minutes from the 7th of December. I'll just be voting no on that, on the minutes. I wanted to clarify that, so you had a reason why I was voting no.
Okay, any other discussion on that? All right, so we will-
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 7th.
Janie will second.
Okay, any other discussion? We start the roll call with you, Mr. Bryant.
No.
Mr. Christensen?
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Heidi Jones?
Aye.
And Sheri votes aye, so that passes five to one. All right. Next on our agenda is donations and grants.
Yeah, I'd like to highlight a couple of the donations. First, from Evy Sweezy and Suzanne Blue for their generous donations to support technology at Jefferson School. And, you know, once again, they're such unbelievably strong supporters of our community, and it was just demonstrated one more time with these generous donations. So thank you, Evy and Suzanne, for your continuing support of the school district and community. It's been a blessing.
And I also appreciate the other donation by the Newmans. It seems a very personal, you know, targeted support, and I appreciate that too. I think every contribution counts, so thanks to those folks.
And Madam Chair, I'll echo everything that has been said. I happen to know Mr. William Sweezy when he was alive. What a wonderful man. Him and Evelyn, Evy, went to school with one of their daughters. Great community people, great supporters, the whole Sweezy family, Suzanne included, supporters of the community. And it speaks also of Neil and Kim Newman, who stepped up, who were both the teachers in our district to help with the educational portion of their, of somebody at Tower View. It doesn't look big compared to the other two, but it's just, it's big for two other people that are going to benefit from it. So thank you to all five of them for, and I know Mr. Sweezy's no longer with us, but we wish him, the Sweezy family and everybody, thank you very much to make this even a better little district.
Thank you very much. All right-
With that, approval of the donations and grants.
Thank you. Second, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. We'll take a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Christensen.
Aye.
Mr. Derrick's?
Aye.
Ms. Fair?
Aye.
Ms. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
And Sheri votes aye. So those donations are accepted 6-0. Thank you very much. Oh, well, let's see, we've already gone to business item 4-1 and 4-2. Business item 4-3 is the grade configurations for next school year.
You know, if I could just give a brief introduction and then hand it over to Mr. Palmetier and Mr. Nemnich for the formal presentation. We are moving ahead with planning for next school year. And I know even during the special session, Mr. Goggan mentioned, you know, that it's going to take time for us to get back to where we were or close to where we were, you know, before COVID. And we recognize that, and so we're really pushing forward to make some decisions early in 2021 so we can move ahead with planning and placing staff members. But I'll let George and Jay explain what the administrative team's recommendation is. By the way, I chose these two because, you know, their buildings, you know, Twin Bluff Middle School and Red Wing High School are the ones most greatly impacted by, you know, the changes this year and into next year. So I thought it'd be appropriate for them to take the lead on presenting.
Good evening, board members. First off, just thanks to Mike, Heidi, Janie, and Arlen for your service. I've enjoyed working with all of you. Carson asked George and I to present information on the 21-22 school year. And a couple of things I just want to make clear too. I mean, we, of course, we want all of our students to safely return to school. And, you know, and what we're talking about for 21-22 is in response to our current situation. And really, it is not unusual for us to start looking at next year as building principles to the subsequent year. So I know that there were some comments that we had about why so soon, but really, this is the time that George and I would start considering what it looks like for next year. So I'm going to present to you the same presentation that we presented to staff at all of our buildings. All the principals did the same presentation to all staff members on 12/15. So that's the same presentation that I'm about to show you. And then, of course, if you have questions, you can certainly follow up with those. So I'm going to start this. Okay. So this is, the administrative team proposes to have K-6 in three or four schools and 7-12 in Red Wing High School for the 21-22 school year. The reasons for the recommendation, and again, I want to be clear, this recommendation is for 21-22. And the model that we are currently in is the only model that will cover all three scenarios. That's distance learning, hybrid, and in-person. We believe that districts will have in-person learning next year, but COVID response should remain fluid. This recommendation may need to change during the summer depending on a variety of factors, county infection rates, MDE recommendation, vaccine availability, and usage rates. And these are a number of important considerations to make. The Jefferson decision, whether we keep it open or closed, could be made later in the year, spring, summer, because we believe that the other buildings would be able to absorb both staff and students depending on conditions out there. Other considerations, of course, are elementary specials and the schedule. That is, how do we accommodate, or how do we make sure that our students are getting art, FIAED, and how that schedule will look. High school offering and their schedule as well. Transportation services, what are our busing zones? Will it be one-tier, two-tier? And food service delivery as well. Other considerations, improving the 21-22 schedule via staff feedback. Again, you know, we built a schedule this year, but we certainly there are things that we would do or could do differently, and those are other considerations as well. As it is, Kids Junction and Colville Delivery will remain the same. And conversations, of course, need to take place with our various bargaining groups for next year. Reasons for the timing of the decision, why are we doing this now? As I said, despite promising news of COVID vaccine, there are significant uncertainties that will likely not be resolved this spring. A January decision is preferred, so Red Wing High School registration can be completed in a timely manner. Staff members know 21-22 assignments, and families will know their school assignments earlier. And this is the last slide, as we solicited feedback from teachers and other EAs, other bargaining groups as well. Your feedback is important as we plan for 21-22. So we have collected the thoughts, questions, and we're still going through them. And what we did in the fall is we collected all of them and put together kind of a Q&amp;A response for staff, and we're currently putting that together right now. So that is the presentation that we presented to our staff. So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Palmetier, Mr. Nemnich- Mr. Nemnich, do you have things that you'd like to add to that?
Just, um, you know, I, I'd open it up for questions. I think the one, the one, uh, issue for the high school that, that, uh, Chris, uh, had on one of the slides is the, uh, the need to get started fairly early. And Chris kind of alluded to that at the very beginning is that, you know, when, when you start planning for the next year, really now is the time to start doing that, at least the preliminary planning. So that's, that's kind of why this is, this is kind of an important thing to be considering at this point. Um, and as we all know, we're hearing about vaccinations and, uh, and that, uh, could affect, um, how we do school next year. You know, possibly, uh, being much more in person, I, that's my hope. Um, but we have to be prepared for all scenarios regardless.
Arlen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you're looking for feedback from the board tonight. Based on what I'm reading here, no recommendation for tonight. Um, you're prior to a discussion in January. And I'll just let you know, I'm on board with this plan as long as we feel that there is enough space in high school to accommodate seventh grade. And we made that decision last year, so I assume we aren't having our endowment increasing. So I would think it's going to continue to work. So I'm totally on board with this.
You know, Arlen, I'll have to speak to that real quick because I think that's going to probably come up again. Um, we do have the space. Um, yes, I mean, it, it is tight and it would certainly be tight with the, uh, going back full, full in. Um, but we do have, we can accommodate that. If that's not, uh, something that would be, um, uh, you know, so difficult for us. I mean, what, what's going to happen is there are going to be some classrooms that are going to have to be utilized every class period. Okay? Uh, so there are going to be some teachers that might be displaced from their classrooms during their prep and things like that. And that, that, um, that's not uncommon in many high schools. Uh, uh, you know, that, that's, uh, that's a fairly common practice. We've had the luxury of having a very, very large building, uh, for a number of years and, and so, um, but we can definitely accommodate. And as you mentioned, Arlen, that, uh, we, we wouldn't have made this recommendation last summer if we couldn't have done that because we knew that in person, uh, is still a possibility this year. So, um, yeah, we can definitely accommodate it.
I'm laughing at the queue. Jim, I think you're up next.
There are too many cancels. They're all the paying attention there.
I know.
Okay, got all kinds of people here. Um, uh, thank you, uh, for the information. Uh, I shared this with the superintendent on the second. I like to have information given to me ahead of time. So in the future, if you'd send us that, your thing in the future, we can read it instead of, you know, it take time to read it to us. So I appreciate you doing that in the future. Um, I like the idea. I think the fact that you have a, uh, a debt additional prince, assistant principal at the high school gives you a little bit more, um, administrative level support to handle another grade. And secondly, on top of that, um, our declining enrollment, we talked about it earlier. It's, uh, it's going down. It's going to go down even more, I think, as we go forward with this, all this distance learning and, uh, hybrid and, um, because people are finding out other alternatives we're hearing. So, uh, I, I like the, uh, I like the idea of seven through 12 there. I'm, uh, be very cautious about adding opening, keeping Jefferson open after, um, starting in September of next year, but I'll be happy to listen to the, um, information, how it goes because of declining enrollment, back to declining enrollment if we have less students. With look at what our building configurations will be for that too. So, but thanks for sharing that. I believe, I believe you're absolutely right about getting, uh, planning ahead of time already. Before you know it's 2021 school year, 2220, however you do it there. The next school year is going to be upon us as we're wrapping up this year. So thank you for telling that and sharing that with us. And I like what I hear.
Janie.
Thanks. And of course Jim did touch some of the things I wanted to bring up, but thank you. Um, you know, I guess I just wanted to encourage, I had already told Carson this, but with me leaving, you know, of course, make sure we get, um, parents and, and different, and the community members perspective on this and input, which I know you guys will do because, um, obviously I, I, I appreciate that you guys have the dates for, that this is for, you know, the 2122 school year and such, but I think we are going to have to be out there and kind of do a PR, you know, communication plan about it in a way and talk about this. Cause I know that was one of my first questions, George, was how are we going to fit everybody in? But, um, you know, on the idea of decreasing class size, I mean, maybe this is going to be a cost savings that we're just going to have to do. And it's a, a good alternative for us. A lot of school districts, um, or towns, our size do configurations like this. So I went, it's not outside the box and I think it's exciting. Um, it definitely is some of the things that I've always advocated for when I've been on the boards will be interesting where it goes on the future, but I just think it'll be important to get teachers and parents and even some of the students ideas on this. So thanks to you guys though. I think it's a, I think really a forward thinking, which is important these days. So great job.
Thanks, Janie. Arlen.
Yeah, I don't really want to hog the mic here, but, uh, I just wanted to follow up with what I said that I'm supportive and I think it's very, really ideal to attempt to do this again next year. Uh, with seventh grade there with the addition of Mr. Matzick to the administration, I think it's ideal. I really think this is the way to go. And it's my hope that we can go and do this next year without COVID hovering over our heads, limiting our, our, our schooling to hybrid and stuff, but rather have a full in-person school and hopefully we can interact and, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're going to get through this and be in a much better situation by the end of the summer. So I'm, I really want to see us try to function this way with the seventh grade there in a regular year or as close to it as possible.
I, I would just echo my fellow board members in saying that I think it's really important to be thinking ahead. Um, when I heard this plan earlier this week, I, um, was excited to think that, you know, we're, we've already got the wheels in motion. The one thing that, um, and I know I've talked with Mr. Palmetier about this before, but if we're going to have the younger kids at Twin Bluff for another school year, I would really encourage us to think about some more playground equipment, um, to make it a more, uh, user-friendly, younger, uh, space for younger kids. So that's just my own two cents. Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your, uh, your time this evening. Uh, next on the agenda would be the approval of the tax levy.
Jackie is available. Um, you can see the background information and then the recommendation is to certify the 2021 tax levy at the amount listed. Uh, but Jackie's here to answer any questions.
Uh, there have been no changes since I presented the truth and taxation meeting last week. Are there any questions? Or not last week, two weeks ago?
Any questions for Jackie?
No, our, our numbers are stable and, and we're going down a little bit, but that's due to our declining enrollment, right? So kind of good news, bad news. Um, yeah. Yeah. So, um, I will make the motion to certify the 2021 tax levy for Red Wing Public Schools in the amount of $11,144,376.10 and to direct the business manager to forward the certification to the county auditor and/or other entities as required.
Mike will second.
Motion made by Heidi, seconded by Mike. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will go to a roll call vote, starting with Arlen.
Aye.
Uh, Janie.
Aye.
Heidi.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so that passes six zero. Thank you. Thanks for staying on, Jackie.
Thank you. Um,
He has the next item as well.
To sign the certification.
Oh, I knew you.
Kind of your last roll.
Will do. Uh, when is that, Jackie?
Thank you.
This week?
Yeah, I, I'll have it to Lisa in the morning. So if you can stop up this week, I have to have it to the county auditor by the 28th.
Okay. Thanks.
When you are on the agenda for the next item, Jackie, which is the Health Partners rebate.
All right. Um, so in November, Health Partners announced that it was giving a rebate, uh, to all its participating entities as a way of business relief for the tough COVID years. Uh, we, at that time, we did not know the amount. Um, the amount came out with our December 1st billing. Uh, we proposed to the LMC that we divide the rebate amongst all the payees by how much they paid out of pocket between November or January 1st and November 30th. With that, about $9,000 will go back to our employees for their out of pocket costs. $58,000 will stay with the district for the share they had paid and about $9,000 will go out to our retirees.
Any questions for Jackie on this? Jim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, all the years I've been involved in insurance, this is the first time I ever heard of insurance coming giving a rebate. Wonderful news. Um, with that though, I will be abstaining from the vote since I, uh, pay in there as a retired, my wife's a retiree, so I will not be voting. I'll be abstaining from any vote that goes forward on this.
And maybe if I can just add, uh, Pam and Jackie, you always correct me if I'm wrong, but I just want to make sure everybody knew on the board that we had a really lengthy, good discussion about this at the LMC committee. And, um, everybody got a chance to kind of talk about it and brainstorm and, um, most of the group, and all of them were invited. So I just want to make sure everybody knew that. Um, and we did have some questions about kind of what was the easiest way for our staff to, you know, disperse this and make this happen. So it wasn't, you know, cumbersome and such. And, um, so then, again, this was a recommendation that Jackie and Amy and Carson had brought to the committee and that's what was passed in the end. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that we had a, a good discussion about it and everybody was aware of it and knew about it. Of course, there were questions about why we're getting a rebate at this time when, uh, you know, our, our premiums had gotten hiked up so much, but we're going to take it, uh, as a blessing. So, um, and I'll leave it at that. But yeah, if anybody has other questions about the committee meeting, but I'm glad we got to do that. I think it just transparent and make sure all the groups knew what was going on. So, um, I'll make a motion to accept, I, I don't have the wording in front of me, sorry, the motion. Um,
I can read it.
Motion is presented.
I move to direct the business office to allocate the Health Partners premium credit between the district's staff and retirees not on Medicare based on out of pocket premiums paid between January 1st, 2020 and November 30th, 2020.
Thank you. I'll move that motion.
Uh, do I have a second?
Uh, Mike will.
All right. And Arlen, your name is in the queue.
As you probably suspected, uh, and if you don't, I guess I have to tell you, I will be abstaining for, for this vote, same as Jim.
All right. We will take a roll call vote, starting with, uh, Janie Fair.
Aye.
Heidi Jones.
Aye.
Uh, Jim Bryant is abstaining. Mike Christensen.
Aye.
Arlen Derrick's.
Abstain.
And Chair votes aye, so that passes four and two abstaining. Okay. Moving right along, we are, uh, we got to cancel the next item on our agenda, which was the grievance. And then now we go into a closed session to, uh, for negotiation strategy.
I'll make the motion to go into a closed session to discuss our negotiating strategy.
Jim, a second.
All right, let's vote on closing the session. Uh, Heidi Jones.
Aye.
Uh, Jim Bryant.
Aye.
Mike Christensen.
Aye.
Arlen Derrick's.
Aye.
Uh, Janie Fair.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so that's six zero. We will go into a closed session and open back up here in a few minutes.
And by the way, um, what I did is during the meeting today, I sent you a, a different meeting invite for this closed session. So Ms. Perdis and the board members, well, and I, and I will need to go to that new link, uh, and click on that to join the closed session.
And then leave this one open?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or you can, uh, you can close out and then, you know, at the end, you know, we can certainly go back.
We want to come back to this one when we're out of that closed session.
Right.
Can we take about five minutes before we go there?
Yes, please. Let's take a recess. Um, we'll meet back up at 8:50. Does everybody have the link? Because I don't seem to have it.
I'm looking for it.
I got it. It was sent, I see it was sent to me. So maybe you didn't want to send it to me.
Would have been sent, uh, you know, it's a eight o'clock dart. Um,
Oh, is it a Carson email or Lisa?
Yeah, it's from me.
Okay.
All right.
If you see it, uh, take that break. And if you don't, uh, I'll stay on the line to try to figure things out here with you.
Sounds good. I don't see it. I don't see mine either.
All right. Let's see here. I hate it when this happens.
Yeah. What time did you send it?
Okay, that's what I'll do.
Yeah, I don't have it. I, I don't either.
If I'm in the meeting.
I got my invite. I didn't recheck to see what the time was, but I, I'm there. So that came here like 8:00 PM tonight or something.
Oh, it's tonight?
Yeah, put an email tonight. I clicked through the email.
Nothing.
Yeah, I don't have any emails.
I have nothing.
Perfect. Okay, uh, Lisa just showed me how to, to do that, so I'm going to send you.
So I'm good to see where I am? Are you going to make another meet?
Uh, well, I, um, let's see. Do you see me right now, Arlen?
Well, I'm back to this one right now, but I logged in on the other one and I'm ready to go.
Yeah, if you could, uh, log out of the regular meeting one and then just, uh, take the new link. Cause right now I just see Jackie and Janie on there.
Okay.
Well, I can click into the new one and be on both, I think. I'll try it.
We have to click out of this.
I'm going to send some invites. What a pain this is, huh?
Yeah.
Pam, do you use your RWPS address? For meetings?
Pam left the meeting.
Okay.
Huh.
Let's see here. Hey, Arlen. All right. So we're still missing, uh, Jim, Pam, Holly, uh, and let's see. Who else are we missing, missing? Oh, Mike.
And Heidi or who?
And Heidi, yeah.
I haven't gotten an email.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Otherwise I'll hear it in both.
Right. I'm still not, I still don't have the invite for the other meeting. No, me either.
All right. I just sent more, uh, invites, so hopefully it works now.
Oh, there you are. Okay. So we should completely log off of this one.
Yeah, log out of your other one because it's recording and so we don't want that to be, um, memorialized.
Okay, I still haven't received anything. Hang on, it's checking. Oh. Is our, is our internet working? I mean, I guess I'm doing this, but I'm not getting an email. There we go. Thank you. Never mind. I mean, I guess I'm doing this, but I'm not getting an email. There we go. Thank you, never mind.
That's enough, we can get her done.
Yeah, there'll be more than that. Run to him quick, man, chair.
Yep.
Oh, they got Mike there too.
Mike, alright.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Alright. Well, Kristen's back. It's 9:43, we'll reopen our regular meeting, we've been in closed session and we're reopening. Uh, the final piece of our agenda tonight is upcoming meetings. Which January 4th is the next school board meeting.
None.
Right here. So, uh, we will miss you, Mike and Heidi and Janie.
We will miss you all as well.
Yeah.
It's gonna be strange not having you here.
It'll be strange not being there, even though we're not there.
No, you got a lot of Monday.
It's gonna be only nights for you guys.
I don't think so.
Well, when you're missing us, you can always tune in on YouTube.
And we can put it off at eight o'clock too.
That's right. Done.
Yeah, no. Thanks everybody.
Well, part of me doesn't want to adjourn, but we maybe should.
Motion to adjourn.
We'll give that to you, Mike.
How do you do the second? The last meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Heidi. Anyone got any other discussion? Alright, Janie, we'll start you off with the vote. To adjourn.
Excellent, it's been a pleasure, you guys. Aye.
Heidi.
Aye. Along.
Yes, Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Peace out.
Arlen.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned. 9:45.
Alright. You guys.
Thanks, you guys.
Merry Christmas.